Welcome to a meeting of the Cupertino City Council. Tonight, we have a special meeting preceding our regularly scheduled council meeting, which starts at 6:45 PM and is now 5:30 PM. Our special meeting is a presentation on Cupertino's upcoming capital improvement projects. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Manager Jim Troop, but I believe that Susan Michael, our capital improvement projects manager, will be presenting on behalf of staff.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, Susan is going to be presenting a PowerPoint presentation tonight concerning the upcoming CIP.
Mayor, would you like roll call?
Excellent, welcome Susan. And I am reminded by our esteemed city clerk that we skipped the roll call. And so Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct that roll call?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
Here. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And so let us go to Susan Michael, CIP manager. Welcome, Susan.
And Mayor, this is Madam Morley, Director of Public Works. I wanted to take a second to introduce the CIP and Susan, if you'll so indulge me.
Of course, welcome.
Thank you. So as you know, the CIP is an exciting part of the budget process and one where we get to actually program out what we're going to build and do the exciting things in the future. Susan is obviously our CIP expert, and she'll tell you a lot about it in a few minutes. I just wanted to frame it a little bit with some of the considerations that we take into account as we're constructing the CIP. There's a lot that goes into it. We look at the available funding. We do a significant amount of outreach. The outreach is critical in creating the CIP and the projects that we bring forward for consideration and discussion. Available staffing is important, so we need to understand where we're at. And this also plays into the number of projects that we already have going. And we are, the CIP group is a busy group with a lot on their plate. So all of this will come together in the CIP that's before you tonight. And with that, I'll turn it to Susan for presentation of the CIP.
Okay, great. Thank you, Director Morley, and welcome Susan Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and members of the public. I am Susan Michael, CIP manager, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to present the proposed fiscal year 2223 CIP program for your comments and feedback. Before we fully launch into the presentation, I wanted to mention the CIP dashboard on the city's website, which has more detail on the current CIP project, if you want to learn more about the projects that are active. For this session's agenda, we will look at a brief overview of the CIP process and the current CIP projects. Then I'll introduce the proposed CIP projects before concluding and opening back up for your comments and questions. CIP process. The CIP, Capital Improvements Program, is a division in Public Works that oversees the city's improvements to our Public Works. Streets, sidewalks, storm drains, bike and ped pass, and our buildings and other public facilities. Historically, CIP projects are the Public Works projects that are greater than or more complicated than typical maintenance or repair project. A capital improvement is the addition of a permanent structural change or the restoration of some aspect of property that will either enhance the property's overall value, prolong its useful life, or adapts it to new uses. A capital improvements project is typically distinguished from a maintenance project when the outside consultants are needed or the implementation budget exceeds $60,000. This is something that comes up quite often. What is the difference between CIP and the City Work Program? The City Work Program projects are manifestations of the city council's goals and policies. CIP projects originate from the need to improve our existing asset. Streets, trees, buildings, parks. How do we choose the CIP projects? We ask the staff, all departments from Parks and Recreation to the City Manager's office, to submit project initiation forms. The projects submitted and considered are generated by health and safety concerns, projects that Council has prioritized in meetings, projects that the public requests in public meetings, and/or initiatives generated by one or more of the master plans that we have in place. We consider these proposals in light of the funding that may have been secured from external sources, what's possible with the current city budget direction, and what staffing we have to take on any additional projects. So what are the next steps? Tonight, Council is asked to comment on the proposed fiscal year 2223 CIP program and comment on the projects presently listed in the five-year CIP programs. After tonight, the CIP will be part of the upcoming review and potential adoption of the city's overall budget. The city council will receive a report on the budget on May 17th, and then Council will consider adoption of the budget on June 21st. So the current CIP projects. A big part of the overall context of the current CIP program is that we have 40 active projects. 12 are Parks and Recreation-centric, 16 are bike and ped transportation-centric projects, 5 are streets and grounds projects, and 7 are focused on facilities. Of those 40 projects, the majority are in design, 6 are in RFQ or bid phase, 6 more in construction, and 8 projects are ongoing annual projects for feasibility studies and I'm happy to report that we completed 9 projects this year, 10 if you include the annexation of Lawrence Mitty property. 6 projects are not active presently. Attachment D of your packet has a brief status report on all the existing projects, including the projects currently on hold. This slide gives a high-level view to the distribution of funding of the different types of existing projects. For example, we have $14.6 million of funding for active bike and ped projects. So the proposed CIP projects. As part of each year's CIP budget and program, we ask Council to reaffirm the funding for the multi-year projects. We have four annually reaffirming projects, no change from last year. They are ADA improvements, annual playground replacement, park amenity improvements, and the streetlight installation. There are four existing projects going into construction very soon, and we are concerned that the bids that we will receive will be higher than the funding previously approved for the project. In Attachment C, the CIP projects table, you'll see these four existing projects that are within categories 3 and 4 with budget amounts listed in the fiscal year 23 proposed funding column. Since we've not received the bids yet, we're not sure if the overage will be required, but we wanted to let Council know that this may occur. In any case, we will be coming back to Council once the bids are received to consider awarding the contracts, and we will make the specific funding requests at that time. In the meantime, we will work with the finance team to properly budget for these possibilities. This is a list of the proposed projects, either from staff or commissions or from years past, that are not, that we are not proposing to include in this year's CIP program. Attachment A lists the project proposed for this fiscal year and for projects we'd like to see included in future years. Many of these projects are very important CIP projects, but we are deferring them to next year because we need to finish more of the current projects in order to have staff available for amenities projects. I'm not going to go into detail on this list of projects, but I'm happy to take your questions at the end. We are proposing seven new projects this year. It's worth noting that four of the projects are connected to current CIP projects and thus will not require additional staffing in the CIP group. That's Blackberry Farms Pool Splash Pad, Jollyman Play Area Bathroom, City Lighting LED Improvements in the City Hall Parking Garage Project. Two projects here are feasibility studies and reports, and one project can be designed in-house and somewhat easily implemented, the Bike Lanes Project. So for the first of the seven, the Blackberry Farms Pool Splash Pad. An installation of a splash pad at the Blackberry Farm Pool. The splash pad would replace the aging slide and supports fulfillment of the outdoor recreation diversity and aquatics facility categories outlined in the Parks and Recreation System Master Plan. The Jollyman All-Inclusive Play Area Adult Assistive Bathroom Facility. The new all-inclusive play area project, the current project, is intended to serve the broad needs of the inclusive community, but the nearest toilet facility is across the park. Providing a large bathroom facility adjacent to the play area that can serve those who require mobility assistance will vastly improve the usability of the new play area. Major Recreations Facility Use and Market Analysis. The Cupertino Park and Recreation System Master Plan has identified the potential need for aquatics, fine art, performing arts, and/or recreation facilities. The general plan has also identified a strategy to explore the possibility of providing additional access to existing facilities such as gymnasiums, swimming pools, and tennis courts. The Deanza Boulevard Buffered Bike Lanes. We propose to re-stripe Deanza Boulevard within the city limits between Bollinger Road and Homestead Road to include a painted buffer area between the existing bike lane and the adjacent vehicle lane. This will require re-striping Deanza Boulevard to narrow the vehicle lanes to provide room for the painted buffer. Design will be done in-house. Funding is for construction only. The City Lighting LED Improvements. This project would bring the city's streetlights into compliance with the dark sky requirement to reduce light pollution, reduce energy consumption, and ultimately save act payor dollars. In the current CIP program, we commissioned a report on converting our existing light fixtures to dark sky compliant LED fixtures that serve pedestrians, vehicular traffic, and the environment. Additionally, many of the city's existing 3,000 luminaires are nearing the end of their useful life. The report estimated that this transition could reduce energy and maintenance costs by nearly $2 million over the next 20 years. Stockelmeier, Byrne, and Lash Inspection Reports and Analysis. These three residential properties in the city's portfolio are presently unused and in some cases dilapidated. This project proposes to commission updated inspection reports of the properties and the structures, develop initial economic forecasting related to some uses, and follow-up with Council and the community to strategize next steps for each property. And the last project in the list is the City Hall renovation or replacement and library parking garage design and construction. The last project in our list of projects proposed for this year is the renovation of City Hall and the new parking garage in the southeast corner of the existing library parking lot. It's a major project that we are asking for only the funding for the design and management consultant services in this fiscal year. And proposing that funding for the construction of the parking garage be in the next fiscal year program and the construction of City Hall project be funded in the following fiscal year. We hope that this project strategy allows Council and staff the time needed to develop a funding mechanism to successfully implement the project. So the next two slides give a little background to the City Hall project, and the slides that follow that will illustrate the development of the cost and scoping analysis that we've done recently. For this slide, we've given a very high-level outline of Council's past considerations of the Civic Center project, and more specifically, the City Hall aspects of those projects. In 2012, an analysis of the current City Hall building was presented to Council as part of Civic Center Master Plan. That master plan was presented to Council in 2015, and it included options for the renovation or replacement of City Hall. In 2018, the Civic Center Master Plan was revisited, and it was decided to move ahead with the library expansion project, but the renovation replacement of City Hall was not supported by Council at that time. In 2021, Council approved funding for the Torrey Avenue City Hall Annex Project and a feasibility study for City Hall. This slide mentions, goes into the overview of the building condition and the status of the building. The current City Hall building needs structural reinforcement and infrastructure systems upgrades in order to withstand a seismic event. This has been documented in several structural analysis reports, including an updated one performed in 2021. Improvements to the building are heightened by the fact that the Emergency Operations Center resides in City Hall. It is critical that the EOC facility remains operational during and after a seismic event or other natural disaster. A quote from the 2021 structural analysis, "Based on a review of the existing design, the current building is very vulnerable to seismic damage. Damage to these critical elements could result in collapse of the roof structure. The life, safety, and economic risk could be substantial." So the next seven slides will illustrate how we've arrived at the proposed project scope and budget. The existing building is 24,140 square feet. We worked with a structural engineer and a cost management consultant to understand the scope and the corresponding cost of the seismic retrofit of the building. We estimate that the seismic retrofit of the building will cost $7 million. The project cost and scope, however, triggers the requirement to make the building fully ADA accessible. Accessibility. The making the elevator ADA accessible as well as other improvements that are needed will cost approximately $4 million to construct, bringing the total to $11 million for seismic and accessibility. So the MEP, which is Mechanical, Electrical, and Plumbing, and IT Systems. City Hall is currently the least efficient building in the Cupertino real estate portfolio, which makes sense since the boiler, heating, and cooling delivery systems and electrical systems are over 50 years old. The IT, sprinkler, and other life safety systems are also in need of replacement. Replacing those systems is critical to the daily operations and critical to the Emergency Operations Center functionality as well. The cost of this scope of work is roughly $10 million, which brings the project to $20 million total. At this point, you're impacting over 50% of the building, and this triggers planning requirement to bring the number of parking spaces up to code, but we will come back to this. Let's continue to focus on the City Hall building for just a moment. The interiors. The interior of the building does not serve the community or the staff well in its current configuration. The impact of the seismic work, the accessibility work, and the MEP IT work will leave very little untouched. Reconfiguring interior spaces could provide community meeting spaces, council offices, and a functional workplace for staff. This adds approximately $7 million to the project budget, bringing the total to $28 And adding a story. We propose adding story to the existing footprint. The current 24,000-square-foot building houses 130 staff members. That is approximately 180 square foot per person. It is apparent that this is not sufficient because there are not enough desks, not nearly enough meeting rooms, and no practical spaces for community interaction. Adding square footage will address the programming needs of meeting and community spaces and will allow for future need. The general plan specifically requires the city to design our assets to, quote, "meet the plan needs and avoid the need for future upsizing." Worth noting that the City Hall Annex Project on Torrey Avenue is an additional 5,600 square feet of space that can be used to house some staff during construction at City Hall. However, that building will be needed in addition to the 36,000 square feet needed at City Hall. Without increasing the square footage at City Hall, we anticipate that the city will require additional off-site leased space in the future in addition to the City Hall Parking. So the parking issue is twofold. Firstly, as part of the library project, in 2018, the city commissioned a traffic study of Civic Center. That study concluded that in order to rectify parking issues at Civic Center, we need to add 185 parking spaces. Second, the work proposed at City Hall triggers a planning code requirement to bring the parking into compliance. The preliminary calculations we've done using building and planning codes shows that we need to add closer to 200 parking spaces. To address both these conditions, we propose adding a standalone parking garage in the southeast corner of the existing parking lot near the library, but not in Library Field. To address both these conditions, we propose, sorry, that's right, we propose expediting the design and scheduling of this part of the project so that we can leverage this new parking structure to alleviate congestion when the City Hall project is underway. So this brings the cost up to the $79.6 million, including escalation and soft costs. So in summary, by proposing these seven projects, we hope to balance the health and safety concerns that our city's assets, respond to the communities and Council's requests for particular projects, build upon the thinking and planning of our city's master plans, all the while working within the reality of our current staffing, resources, and budget constraints. That concludes the presentation. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Susan, and we will go to our members of the public, and I'll reiterate our process here. So in a hybrid meeting, we'll go ahead and go to our members of the public with their Zoom hands raised first, and then we will go to any members of the public that are calling in. And so if you're calling in, you'll need to, I believe, press star nine in order to raise your hand. And following that, we'll go to any live blue cards that are here on the dais by the time that the first speaker is done speaking. So by the time that the first Zoom speaker is done speaking, if there is one, then you'll need to have your hand raised in Zoom, you'll need to have your live card in, you'll need to have your email in as well. So that's the fourth and final way to make public comment on items in a city council meeting. So if you email the city clerk's office, that's cityclerk, one word, at Cupertino.org within this time when the first person is speaking, then your comments within three minutes will be read into the record. Okay, so let's take a look at who we have on Zoom. I see three people with their hands raised. They are Peggy Griffin, Tessa Parish, and the third hand is now not raised anymore. And so I'll remind our members of the public, as well as Jean Bedord now. And so Peggy Griffin, welcome, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Council and staff, and thank you, Susan Michael, for the presentation. I'm going to go really quickly. The inspection reports and analysis of city-owned properties, I think you should add Torrey Avenue to that list. Major Recreation Facilities Use and Market Analysis, I think you should replace it with a master plan for Memorial Park, followed by design and plan for Lawrence Mitty. Do what we have. As far as the splash pad at Blackberry Farm, half a million dollars? What's the slide? I just, how big is this splash pad? I went and looked online, and it looks like it would be a replacement for the pool. So I think some more detail is in order. I missed the very beginning of the meeting, so I apologize. And as far as City Hall and the library parking, yes, City Hall does need, I think, a replacement because there's so much that it needs. And a long, a couple of years ago, you talked about moving the emergencies response people to Community Hall as a temporary so that they would not have a problem during an earthquake, but that doesn't seem to have happened. And as far as a three-level parking garage, the public did not want it. We don't want to lose Library Field. Susan Michael said, no, it wouldn't, but you're going to become, it's going to be a canyon on Regnart Creek Trail, and you're going to overlook the neighboring homes. And three-story means four floors with an open, you know, car lights going over into neighbors' homes. Find a different solution. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Peggy. Our remaining hands raised on the Zoom function are from Lisa Warren and Connie Cunningham, after Tessa Parish and Jean Bedord. Next, we have Tessa. Welcome, Tessa.
Mute. Here we go.
Okay. Hi there. Good evening, Council. So good to see you guys in person.
Just wanted to comment on the City Hall parking lot. I have seen in other cities, or in one northern city, a stackable, kind of like an elevator type of parking. I don't know if they make them that large, but the one I saw was pretty large. And I also wanted to make sure that the public was going to be involved in the survey, the question, and also in the request, if that's what's needed. The Blackberry Farm seemed pretty high. I'd like to know, or I don't know if it's available to the public, how many people does that, does that pool service? And is there better, I mean, I guess who selected, what's a priority? Memorial Park, we just saw the Cherry Blossom Festival, and it's still not, the pool's still not filled in. I think that's all I want. Just please include the public and the best use of our funds. They all seemed a little hefty. City Hall definitely needs it, but it seemed like a lot in terms of, you know, what's needed and wanted. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Tessa. Next, we have Jean Bedord. Welcome, Jean.
I am here to support the City Hall renovation replacement and library parking garage project. Last Friday, I attended the ribbon cutting for the library expansion. I was on the library commission that got the new building built back in the early 2000s, and the community has enjoyed the benefits of that up-to-date construction. But when I came out of the library and looked across Civic Plaza, there was the old City Hall, the same era as the old library that we tore down for the new library. The library commission went through the same denial process that maybe, just maybe, the old building was salvageable. We even tried to give it away to a nonprofit for a dollar a year, but no takers because they'd have to pay millions to upgrade the structure. Just like City Hall, the old library was functionally obsolete. When the elevator broke down, there were no parts to repair it, so they had to manufacture it specifically. Our wiring, both electrical and broadband, was even worse. This current City Hall was built in 1965, over 50 years ago. In that time period, the building codes have changed due to the 1989 earthquake, and I was in that, and the building has become seismically unsafe. The HVAC systems are obsolete. They're also inefficient and do not meet new construction standards. Technology's also changed. The IT infrastructure demands more electricity and better wiring than in 1960s. In the next eight to 10 years, Cupertino will have approximately 20% more residents. This will have a major impact on the city infrastructure. It's time to upgrade our civic facilities. I urge this council to approve funding to start the planning process for the new City Hall. Cupertino residents deserve better. Brownouts at City Hall? This is Apple. This is apple country. We expect our city services to be in this century, not last century. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Our next speaker is Connie Cunningham. Welcome, Connie. Oh, I'm sorry. Our next speaker is Lisa Warren before Connie Cunningham. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm just going to go down the list. For BlackBerry Farm, the splash pad, I don't remember that having. I'm just wondering if that had public support because it seems limited, and people were asking for more swimming pools in this, like Peggy says, it's pretty unclear what this is and how much of that space it takes up. But if we're losing a swimming pool, and I realize that's sort of the play pool, not the lap pool, but it's still something people wanted more of in the city, and honestly, I think it would be a lot nicer if there was a way, if you needed to have some sort of splash pad, and I'm not suggesting this be added to the list, but to let kids and whoever have access somewhere to the creek to be able to do splashing. Because I don't really understand what this is, but it seems like it may not be something that was high priority for anyone or a good idea at this point. And without more information about it, I guess I can't speak well educated about it, but that's just my gut feeling. City Hall renovations, again, as someone who's concerned about a three-story, four-level, lights-on-the-top garage without knowing how any other option was eliminated, and that's sort of been put out there. If we're having designing, design team work on it, I hope they're going to be asked to consider and present options to that because it doesn't feel like a good thing. And I'm surprised that by enlarging City Hall, et cetera, whatever the parameters are for now requiring one hundred and eighty-five extra parking spaces, it's a little, it's a little surprising. I'm not, I mean, the building codes are what they are, but where we're taking parking away, or an urge to take parking away everywhere else, it seems funny that more parking would need to be added. So let's revisit that. And also, if staff is not going to come back full-time, everyone at the same time, I hope this evaluation is based on who's really going to be there, and the need for more meeting rooms might be in the olden days when, if we're not having a whole lot of collaboration going on in person, which is, I understand how it is right now, and that's something to go on into the future, that really, what do we really need? Is this an old wish list, or is this realistic for new post-COVID? But I would prefer everyone there. Bike lanes and.
Fifteen seconds.
Yeah, just, I really think there needs to be an actual study of existing treatments, how they're used, if they're used, before a bunch of money and time spent for the city.
All right. Thank you very much, Lisa. Our next and final speaker on Zoom is Connie Cunningham, and I'll remind our members of the public with hand raised. You need to have your hand raised by the time that the first person was done speaking, and that goes for the other members of the public as well. So Connie Cunningham, welcome.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council members and all the people who are attending this meeting, whether live or on Zoom. I mainly wanted to talk about the City Hall renovation. I was reading this and then also listening to the presentation this evening, and it says here that seismic and other issues have been documented in multiple reports, 2011, 2012, 2014, and 2021. And as a previous speaker noted, the building was built in 1965 and has many systems issues in addition to seismic. My biggest concern when I was looking at this was how long we have been putting off doing the seismic retrofit when we have so many people who work in the building and who are in danger should there be another earthquake similar to the one in 1989. This report tonight specifically said that this is for going into the design and so forth, so I think would be addressing any of the concerns that other speakers have raised about parking or any other issues. So I think that of the, of the items on this, that the Cupertino City Hall is the most important. There is nothing more important than the people who work for our city, including the staff, all the staff, and the city council and commissioners who meet in the building. I think that we need to be careful not to be enamored with the latest shiny object that we would like to do. People are very interested in new projects and sometimes forget the very real importance of maintenance, repair, rehabilitation, and rebuilding to continue the very fine city that we currently have. Again, I want to express my concern that there are people working in the building and have been for years throughout all of these, and this is a decade, 2011 to 2021, wherein seismic and other issues have been noted. So I would urge the council to put a very high priority on this activity. They're only asking for the money to get involved in the study and, you know, planning for this at this time, and they have given a very reasonable outlook for how future funding would be obtained for the rest of it. So please, I urge you to place this very high on your list. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Connie. Next, we go to our members of the public that are here. Madam City Clerk, are there any blue cards? I do see a couple in front of me. Thank you very much. They are from Jennifer Griffin, Larry Dean, and Heather Dean. Welcome, Jennifer Griffin.
Good evening, city council. I'm Jennifer Griffin, and that was a really nice report on the capital improvement projects. I know that that's, trying to explain that to the public is a real art form. Let me just start out with the Stokelmeier House. I'm really glad to see that on your list. This is a very, very valuable resource that Cupertino has. I really think that it's important that the Stokelmeier House be elevated to the list of importance that it already has. Several years ago, the city took a great deal of care to rebuild, rebuild, re-tree the orange orchard, which is outside. At that time, the new trail was put through the property, and I'd like to see the farmhouse, it is, I think, from 1905, be elevated to the level of significance that it really does hold. We need to have more history life museums in Cupertino. We, I would like to see a farm-era historical site in Cupertino. Farming was a very, very important part of the history of Cupertino. This doesn't just include orchards. There was ranching with cattle, there was wheat growing, there was wineries, and that area in Manovista is very, very important for this. There are other areas around the country where you have living parks. Appomattox, which is where the Civil War was essentially ended, is a very, very important living history park. It has been left the way that it was. It's a village, and they have people there talking about pros and cons dressed up as history, historical figures from that area. I was very, very impressed when I went there. My grandmother was born forty miles away from there in the Shenandoah Valley, and I wanted to see exactly the history of that area. I am fully, I understand a lot more things about the South and areas because of the living interpretation. I think that we can do that in California. We, we have the missions, that's what I grew up with, but we need to have this, you have to understand the history of the area that you live in to fully make decisions about what is happening. I guarantee you, what is going on with Russia and Ukraine has basis two to three hundred years ago, but nobody knows that. At this point, I won't go into that. I also am very, very concerned about, we do need to retrofit the City Hall. I'm wondering if that, if you guys can do temporary retrofits right now, a lot of the tech buildings after the eighty-nine. See, thirteen seconds, I'm not sure what that's from. They were immediately retrofitted after the eighty-nine earthquake, and some of them still have the same retrofits. Can we do that? Can the shells support two stories? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Our next speaker is Larry Dean. Welcome, Larry.
Thank you, Mayor Paul and fellow council. I'll be brief. And thank you to staff. I know you're working hard and overloaded, and I appreciate what you're going through, and I appreciate your time. I'm here on behalf of Carmen Bridge, trying to keep it on the, on the shorter list rather than the backlist, a little project in history. We've been working on this project for seven years, doing research, getting it ready to have it included into the bike ped plan of 2016. Very well-supported locally with well over five hundred supporters in that community. But you have to sort of live in the neighborhood to appreciate the need. If you, if you don't live in the neighborhood, or if you don't live in town, you go, well, what's, what's this all about? Why do you, why do you need a bridge here? One of the elements that's bubbled up here in the last day or two is the cost. I know in staff's reports, they have five point four million dollars for a bridge, and I'm thinking, wow. When we started this, I was thinking, if it's over a million, that's too much. Early on, I got ahold of folks at the Mark Thomas Group, and they came back and said a two-lane walking ped bridge ought to cost around three to four hundred thousand dollars. Little later on, the estimate was ten million dollars when it was included into the bike ped plan. The VTA proposal was two point eight million dollars. Where did those numbers come from? And now we have five point four. What, the problem with that is those big numbers stick in people's heads, and it becomes a negative, negative argument towards it. This project will probably be funded by outside sources, either the VTA, Apple Computer, who's been very, very generous with Cupertino, would not be interested in this project typically. But state money and county money can be available, and I would expect it to be fully funded. In fact, with the Measure B funds, it missed the cutoff by two, two positions out of a list of thirty. Two-thirds of those applicants were funded. And today, there are VTA funds looking for a home. We know that. I'm asking, and we're asking that one of you take the lead to work with the fellow council and get this locked into the CIP. We're not asking that it starts work right away. We're thinking that it can start in twenty-three, twenty-four, depending on how the schedule is. But the community will be very happy to see your creative leadership. The cynical community and others will be very disappointed if it's put on the back shelf with the risk of it never getting to. So let's make them happy, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, Larry. Next, and finally, we have, we have, apologize, Heather Dean. Welcome, Heather.
Hello, council and mayor. I am here to please request that City Hall gets a redo, whatever it takes. It seems impossible to think. I've lived here for forty-five years, and during that time, I heard a lot about the library. Oh, we're redoing the library, we're getting a new library. The library has been done and redone. City Hall sits. We have a lot of important people working for us there, and I think that they deserve to be in a safe place and a place that can ignite their activities to produce for our city wonderful things. So I would please ask you to consider doing something with, I hadn't thought that maybe just tearing the whole building down and redoing, but perhaps that would be an option. It's always seemed to me strange that you go in and you go downstairs. It seems like a strange, strange building. And as I get back to the, to the, to the library, I have a note here that says, in the forty-five years that I've been here with the libraries being redone and redone, the one thing that hasn't changed with the library is the parking. The parking to our library is atrocious. So I thank the County of Santa Clara for going into mobile books and online books, and so we don't have to any longer drive to the library. We can just do it ourselves in the middle of the night if we want to. So I know parking throughout the valley is always a problem, but with all the bike riders and all these electric bikes that I see around and scooters, perhaps parking wouldn't be so bad. So please consider doing something for our city, we're hall workers, and produce something. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Heather. And Madam City Clerk, do we have any email comments that came in during the time for bringing in email comments?
No, mayor, we do not.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. So let's go ahead and bring this back up. Let me do a time check here, six sixteen. We're at a little bit less than half an hour before our regular council meeting starts, and so let me go with a round of comments and see if that works out. Councilmember Willie has his hand raised first. I do see both Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Moore. Unfortunately, you'll have to flip a coin as to who was there first, but okay, Vice Mayor Chow, very gracious of you. Councilmember Moore, you'll be after Councilmember Willie, followed by the Vice Mayor. Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, I'd like to make just a few comments, and then, you know, I'll sit back and do more listening. Hopefully, Susan can answer some questions. You know, the backdrop for this is in 2019, we were given a really thick binder on the master plan for Community Hall and this community space, and it had multiple options in it, the seismic retrofit option, a new City Hall option, and we looked at the costs that were estimated back then, and the new City Hall would have been sixty-nine point five million, and the retrofit was four point one million. And the result of that meeting was the retrofit. But now, I'd like to put a few things, maybe ask some questions that Susan can answer. You know, I want to be sure we and the public realize what we are talking about here. The EOC requirement requires a higher level of rigidity than regular buildings. Even though it's only one small portion of the building, the entire building is required to meet that redundancy requirement. Okay. Built in 1965, if we were to go look through San Jose, San Francisco, Sunnyvale Mountain View, we don't see all these buildings being torn down. So we did have a sizable seismic event, 1989, Loma Prieta. So the first question to Susan, are there any current failures in City Hall? Any cracked concrete beams? Any cracked sheer walls? Things that would necessitate something needing to be done right now? Something that clearly is substandard compared to all the buildings? The codes have been increased, no question about it, especially if you throw in the requirement for added redundancy because there would be an EOC room in that building. And so I want to be sure we really understand what we're talking about because it's coming off a little bit confusing. For something this large, when we're talking seventy million dollars, we have to really be good stewards of our resident tax dollars. Looking, in fact, I went and watched the recording from the 2019 meeting, and in there, finance said, well, the, the finance rate would be about four percent for the borrowed money. Seventy thousand dollars borrowed at four percent is interest of two hundred and thirty-three $70,000 borrowed at 4% is interest of $233,000 per month. That's a lot of CIP projects. Not a year, a month.
I think you mean 70 million borrowed at that rate, right?
Uh, 70 million would be interest only, no principal, of $233,333 per month, interest only. And so we need to be sure that when we're going to enter into something like that, we understand the ramifications of those tax dollars that we're supposed to be good stewards of. Yes, I do think we always need to be looking at how to improve city hall for the community, but I think we do need to be sure we have a good characterization so we know how to move forward. So I'll leave my comments at that for right now. Just want to be sure. And, and Susan, if there's something there that I'm missing, if you truly know of something, please don't hesitate to alert us.
Okay. Thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. And Susan, did you want to speak to Councilmember Willie's questions or anybody from Public Works? I, I think Councilmember Willie's question was specifically directed at you, Susan, so, but if you want one of your colleagues to answer, please feel free to speak up thusly.
Mayor, if, if you're, if you will, I'll take the start on this one and Susan can fill in for us.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. As you know, we, we do have a, a series of reports and continued evaluations on, on the seismic condition of, of city hall. And the, the report takes, takes a look at it as a regular office building as well as a, a sort of the heightened structure, structural needs for something that is, and you know, has the EOC. And in both cases, there are, there are identified needs for the building in order to, to render it safe. So there's, there's continued needs no matter how you look at it. We would certainly want to explore those in the future design efforts and that's what we'd be looking to do through, through adding it into the CIP for this year. In terms of existing damage to, there are identified cracks and settlement, especially around the perimeter of the building, that would need to be addressed along the way. So those are the things that have been identified through the structural reports. And the structural reports, I think, were included with, with your package.
Okay. Thank you very much, Director Morley. And so in the interest of time, I'm going to go ahead and go to Councilmember Moore. And it looks like we're probably allocating at approximately five minutes per. So Councilmember Moore.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm looking at the, the fiscal policies from our CIP book and, and I noticed that it's the same for fiscal year 2021 to '22 as we had for 2020 to 2021. And I know that this, this, the seven projects went to the, the Planning Commission a few weeks ago. However, the Planning Commission was only tasked with determining if the projects were consistent with the general plan and they were not asked to share their opinions and thoughts on, on the project. So personally, I would take this list and send it back to the Planning Commission to have them actually comment on, on the projects and to ensure that, that the, that the policies here on page eight and nine of the CIP budget are, that they're actually being followed. So, so all anticipated capital improvement projects for the current fiscal year, plus having four additional fiscal years. And it says the city will prepare an update of five-year CIP encompassing all city facilities. I'm not sure if we have a copy of that. Projects included in the CIPs will have complete information on the need for the project, the justification, description and scope of work, total cost estimates, future cost estimates, future operating and maintenance cost, and how the project will be funded. And I think that last part's really important, that we understand exactly how each one of these projects is going to be funded. Because I don't feel that the short little description that we have, specifically when you're looking at something that might cost $79.6 million, I don't know where that, where that money is going to be coming from. And I, I don't think we should simply say, we're going to do a design at, for this much money and we're going to forget about how we're going to fund the actual project moving down the road. And I do want to point out that in the existing '21 to '22 CIP budget, we already had this community hall, city hall and community hall improvements program and feasibility budgeted at $500,000. And it said, cost estimate up to project completion, $40 million projected for design and construction of renovated city hall building, community hall to be determined. So I will leave it at that, but it would be my preference that we sent this back to the Planning Commission for comments. And also, when we looked at it, back when I was on planning, we looked at general plan consistency in terms of equity for where these projects were around the city and we found that there were, there were issues where the, they were, tended to ignore certain parts of the city. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. And I do see our city manager with a hand raised. And so Jim, did you want to comment on Councilmember Moore's-
Oh, just real quick, just on the timing, because we do need to continue forth with the budget process. So trying to send it back to meet the timing would be, I don't think we can have that meet the same time, meet the timing requirements for the budget.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jim. And so who would like to go next? Councilmember, oh, I'm sorry about that. Vice Mayor Chow, you're next in the queue. And then Councilmember Way, did you want to go next after this? Okay. Vice Mayor Chow.
So I'd like to see one item added for amenities for dog parks, because other cities have multiple dog parks and off-leash dog park. For example, fencing and water dish and identify some areas. And I'd like to see bollards on D'Anza rather than just painted a bike path. So I'd like to see cost estimate for both. And I think we should move up the Bolinger Bike Path because there were, were recent deaths and also accidents on that road. And I don't support starting major recreation facilities at this time since we have so many unfunded projects. And then I know I don't have a lot of time, so I wrote, prepared some slides to help summarize my point. So I'll share them. Wait, where is it? Splash. Here. Okay. So talking about Parks and Rec Master Plan, which we just approved in 2019, it says to continue Blackberry Farm without expanding, but to pursue expanding the swimming season. And in terms of splash pad, it's mentioned, but it's basically said, we need to geographically disperse this in the city. So splash pad at Blackberry Farm does not comply with the Parks and Rec Master Plan we approved. And Parks and Rec Master Plan now going on to Memorial Park. It specifically calls for a master plan to be, to be created with extensive outreach to determine what to do. Then the next short-term goal is amphitheater and repurposing of the pond. And, and then in, as part of that, there are, there are splash pad and then many other ideas, water play mentioned for Memorial Park. So if we want to pursue a splash pad, the first location I think should be Memorial Park. And also in terms of fiscal, the CIP plan back in 2019, '20, we do have the Memorial Park Master Plan and Parking Study on the CIP. I don't know what happened to that plan. That's supposed to be done in one year and then we can look at other unfunded project. But then now in this year, I'm, so yeah, this should be immediate, short-term. And then now in this year, I see that pond purpose, repurposing seems to be the first and we don't have master plan, we only have specific plan design. And so who are going to decide what goes to the Memorial Park, I wonder? We really need to outreach to the community. Here is a conceptual design myself. We could have splash pad here, we could have an outdoor event space with concrete pavement and the farmer's market can go here. Maybe we could have playable water channel and then some sand play and natural play here. This is all in Parks and Rec Master Plan. So a splash pad could be simple or it could be more elaborated and I have other examples in my document. And next for city hall. For the city hall, I think the staff forgot to mention, actually, the previous approved plan include underground parking and EOC. That's after extensive outreach since 2012 to 2015. And the council at that time were against spending $5 million just for design when we don't know how to finance the $70 million. Then after the council looked at the financing options, they decided to not pursue the city hall at the time. And it seems that we are scratching everything and start from scratch. That's concerning. And I'd like to point out that the CIP plan we adopted for this year specifically did not mention city hall since this was drawn up after we purchased the Torrey building. This plan specifically calls for renovation strategy and it didn't call for seismic structure analysis again. It's only said structural, mechanical and other coded modification as needed to meet coast standards. That's it. And we are supposed to this year have a planning and programming to talk about what's occurring and needed for, for the office space and potentially conference space and remodel kitchen space. So this is all about remodeling, I think, planning. But it seems the staff is working on a totally different project, which has a parking garage never mentioned in the current CIP and seismic analysis and the new city hall. And this is unfortunately the first meeting we are discussing this. This should have come to the council early. If the staff decide to change direction of a CIP project, this, I would appreciate if they come to the council first to get public comment and council direction before changing direction of a CIP project. We now have wasted the whole year and spent some extra dollars on direction that's not directed by the council. And then for the Torrey Avenue, again, the staff is supposed to come to the council first to talk about the long-term use of the facility and the programming. And we spent $6 million of taxpayer dollars to purchase the building and we plan to renovate. How come we don't seek public input and council direction before we decide what to do? But right now, the, the staff says, in the update says, the planning is complete. So there was no chance for the public to provide input. And, yeah, so that, this is for that slide. So, and we also have a lot of other unfunded major project besides the city hall. Memorial Park Improvement is going to take a, a few million dollars. We have a lot of bike path project, I-280 Trail, Pacific Railway and Stevens Creek, D'Anza and Bolinger and Carmen Bridge. And we have many retrofit renovation of city buildings and community centers. Parks and Rec Master Plan still have a lot of things to implement. And now we are looking at major recreation aquatics and plus Blackberry Farm Golf Course still needs to be improved or redone. And we have Stevens Creek Corridor Plan. So many unfunded project without a long-term financing plan. And I don't know how we can justify spending four, five million dollars just to design a city hall. We may not be able to afford. And the past two council have looked at this and decided not to pursue a new city hall. So before we go any further, we need a financing plan for everything.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. In the interest of time, let's go to Councilmember Way.
Yeah, I'm down.
Yeah, thank you very much. Councilmember Way.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. As a sort of newly elected council member, I really like to thank our staff for bringing all the reports back so that we can familiarize with those. I am looking at these things with a fresh eye. As for parking, we all know we need it. We got a great library expansion. We need parking spaces and I believe all the library lovers would agree with that. And so how do we accommodate that? I think that could be researched. As for the city hall seems to be a prime discussion of tonight, I like to say, yes, we are, we have so many, so many projects. When I read through the four reports, what comes to mind is we are putting people's lives in danger, playing them in, working in this place. And actually, the council meet, meet pretty often on Room C, Conference C under the hall and then I, I feel that it's pretty an unsafe place to work. And I understand we don't have funding, but to start to work on this doesn't mean we're going to have to start a building next state. But to start to plan it and look ahead, I think it's a necessary step. And I want to appreciate the staff because one of our city work plans, there is, I put a five on this. It's called Analyze Potential Revenue Measures. So we can find creative ways. Of course, the council needs to, you know, weigh in there, the public input. I do consider this as our very first public input and I appreciate the staff's recommendations and this is putting into the public and without council input. But I do believe the city hall needs to be worked on, to start to work on right now. We are putting people's lives in danger and this is where, when emergency comes, that's our city staff going to serve our residents. And I believe a lot of speakers, even the word about the money, they do understand the importance of having a safe place for our city workers to work, having a safe place for everyone to look at the city hall and to match our library and this nice building that we're in. So I am not opposing to it, even though I do believe that the funding needs to be worked on and at the same time, let's do that. So the city hall, I do believe we, we are responsible for it. It's a decade of work. I look at the first report, it's 2011, this is 2022. It's 10 years down the road and are we, are we going to kick the can down the road again? Let's work on this and have some innovative measures and study it and start with both study sessions, the planning of the city hall plus how we're going to fund it and let's work on it together. That is my comment. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Way. Yeah, I mean, as a person, I think in the city, that's probably spent the most time in city hall in the last five years. You know, I do appreciate the comments from members of the public that are assiduous and concerned about the safety of people. You know, for my $600 a month, I, I do truly appreciate the fact that people are worried about, you know, the building falling down on my head in case there is an earthquake. But, but what I will say is that everything that we've heard with regard to council commentary on the history of this is, is fully accurate. You know, with regard to the library expansion space, that initially was a $6 million project. We approved $8 million for it. But I do want to take people back, you know, a couple of years and imagine what would have happened if city council allocated, even if we had a so-called warm shell from a developer, at least $50 million to make a new city hall. Or more realistically, if it's a brand-new city hall, somewhere from $80 to $100 million. Do you think maybe that money would have been useful to us in the ensuing years of the pandemic? I will tell you that we did not lay off a single permanent employee in the city of Cupertino. And so I absolutely agree with the idea that we, we should be very mindful of the stewardship of the, of the city's money. I'm going to go ahead and put forward a motion in the interest of time. I, you know, I tried my best to listen to the concerns expressed here, but I will also say that, you know, I think our city staff has done a good job with a number of things, you know, in the past couple of years. And I also think that we should be looking at a plan for making sure that the workplace is safe. But I'll also say that I thought that the city council's efforts to try to economize and make sure that we come up with a solution for the office space issue and to really think about what we can be doing in order to keep it as safe as possible is something that we're all committed to going forward. I, I think for us to say right now, we're going to spend $4 million to encumber a potential future $80-plus million and put a three-story parking structure overlooking the Regnar Creek Trail neighborhood, I, I would ask people to think to themselves whether the Regnar Creek neighborhood, in their experience, would be particularly happy about that and basically say nothing. And I, I think if you've been with the Regnar Creek Trail issue, then I, I also think that perhaps it may be a good idea for us to go back to the drawing board here and ask ourselves, what's the best thing to do in terms of economization of our city's funds, making sure people are safe and making sure that the surrounding neighborhood is, is happy as well as the people using the space? So, so here's my motion. Let me go ahead and try to share this. All right. So I've put this into a Word document. Let me know if you're not seeing the content. And I apologize if some of this is not, you know, fully, fully clear. I'll, I'll make the clarifications if, if I need to. I move that council support putting forward 10-455 Torrey Avenue upgrades in the CIP to allow for office space use for city hall employees. With regard to city hall, I further move that council provide direction to staff to reduce above-surface- provide direction to staff to reduce above-surface parking impacts, provide direction to staff to be conscious of costs, and to provide a plan for cost auditing, provide direction to staff that the city complete the process for securing a procurement officer for an auditing mechanism before proceeding with further estimates. Further, I move that council direct staff in future years to refer, let me add this too here, to refer to the Planning Commission for Input on the proposed CIP projects in addition to an assessment of conformance with the general plan. Further, I move that council direct staff to inform council and the public of what the funds for the Westport Project Park mitigation fees are being allocated towards. And so I'll add an S to the fees here. Further, I move that council direct staff to return to the public with a study session on Memorial Park consistent with or at least addressing the recommendations of the Parks and Rec Master Plan. May I have a second for this motion at this time? I I see two hands raised. Vice Mayor Chow, you seem to raise it first. So, you know, thank you very much. I'll just remind us, we're at 6:41. And I'll bring this back to the dais for purposes of discussion. I just want to make it very clear. I am okay with, you know, spending a good amount of money making an upgraded and state-of-the-art, you know, City Hall that is in tandem with the quality that we're putting forward as a jurisdiction. But I don't know if this is the right way to do it, basically in the 11th hour to say, hey, go ahead and dump $4 million so we basically can encumber another 80 million down this plan that we really haven't fully vetted or vetted at all, frankly. And so I do see a hand raised from Councilmember Moore. Did you want to make a comment at this time?
Yes, thank you. I I want to point out that in our in our attachments, we do have an April 2021 letter regarding the seismic situation. And I'm wondering how that happened when the the fiscal year doesn't start until until July of 2021. So I don't understand how this happened because we hadn't actually allocated the the funding for it. So I'm a little confused if that's a typo. Just curious about that. But so going back to the fiscal policies, it says that we have an objective process for evaluating CIP projects with respect to the overall needs of the city. And it will be established through a priority ranking of CIP projects. The ranking of projects will be used to allocate resources to ensure priority projects are completed effectively and efficiently. So I was a little surprised with the motion that there wasn't a part about when we are going to rank the projects. And I'd also like to understand the the funding that we're going to have. So if you could let me know when when we're going to do the actual ranking, I would appreciate that.
Those are fair concerns, Councilmember Moore. I had forgotten about the directive to rank these projects. And so I I will note that, you know, our our city manager pointed out that we do have a a timing issue. I I would suggest that we continue this to the regular meeting so that we can continue a discussion on it. We're at 6:43 right now. I do want to make a very brief transition before we continue this, you know, process. Our our regular meeting starts at 6:45. So so may I have a motion to continue this discussion to the regular meeting? Councilmember Wei?
I'll move.
Will I, will anyone second? Vice Mayor Chow seconds? Okay, thank you very much. And Madam City Clerk, let's go ahead and take a voice call on that one. Vote.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We're at 6:44, so we'll start the regular meeting in about a minute or so. Did you want to have a little bit more time? Sure, Councilmember Wei. Oh, absolutely. I will go ahead and email this motion to the city clerk and ask her to send it forward to council. All right, we're we're at 6:44. With with the leave of council and and staff and, you know, apologies to the public, we'll go ahead and start our regular meeting in five minutes at 6:50 to give a brief breather for this item. So thanks very much. We'll come back in five minutes. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled City Council meeting for May 3, 2022. It's 6:50 right now. I apologize, we ran a little bit long on our study session and special meeting for the capital improvement projects. And so here we are now. And Madam City Clerk will conduct the roll call after we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag. All right, please, please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all very much. And so Madam City Clerk, if you could please conduct the roll call of our city council.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Wei?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
I'm here. Thank you very much. All right, well, we have a packed house tonight. And I I just have to tell you, this is so invigorating and refreshing to see after two years. So welcome back to the chambers. Our first category of items falls under ceremonial matters and presentations. The first item, Item One, is a set of proclamations honoring musicians from two Cupertino high schools for their performances at the Washington DC International Music Festival on April 16 and 17, 2022. And so let me ask a quick question. How many people here are here from the Homestead Cupertino Symphony Orchestra? Okay, okay, great. All right. And and how many people are here from the Homestead Symphonic Wind Ensemble? So it kind of looks, okay. Well, wonderful. Let's try to do this. Who are the directors for or the faculty for the Homestead Cupertino Symphony Orchestra here? Are there, if people can raise their hands or stand up? Wonderful, wonderful. Oh, this is excellent. And how about for the Homestead Symphonic Wind Ensemble? Couldn't make it here? Okay, so we'll have one faculty representation. Okay, so let's try to do this. We'll present the proclamations first to the Homestead Cupertino Symphony Orchestra. And so we'll ask your faculty director to come up. And we will also ask your your members of this organi, this combined organization to come up and join us on the dais. We won't read the proclamation into, or the proclamations, I should say, into the record. Those are available, those are available online. But we will physically hand them over to your faculty represent representative. And so if any of the members of the Homestead Cupertino Symphony Orchestra would like to join us on the dais to take a photo of this presentation, please do so, as well as, of course, your director. So welcome. Sure, yeah, let's come on. Okay, everyone, so here we are. And if if council could join me in the front as well in the order that we're on the dais. So so here we are. And I want to thank everyone for being here. You guys made an amazing journey, and I'm sure you made beautiful music in DC representing our our fine community of Cupertino. And let's ask your director. Please tell us your name.
My name is Ben Scharf.
Okay, welcome. And would you like to say a few words about the organization and the trip?
Yeah. Hi, everyone. Again, my name is Ben Scharf. I'm the Director of Orchestras at Cupertino High School. I'm also the Associate Director of Bands at Homestead High School. So I belong to both of the amazing groups that performed. So we had a really amazing trip to Washington DC. We saw some sights. We had some clinicians with some world-class composers. And of course, we had our amazing performance in the Kennedy Center for the Performing Arts. So a lot of the clinicians, again, world-class clinicians that came in, and they certainly left a huge impression on us. But from what I heard afterwards, it sounds like we really left an impression on them. And one of them even came up and and told us that we were one of, we were some of the strongest music programs in the country. And I really do think that's in in part to the support from all of the families, all of the parents that show their support toward towards the performing arts and because of the support from the city. So I just huge thank you to Mayor Paul and the city council for supporting the arts in Cupertino.
Thank you very much, Director Ben Scharf. Okay, let's all try to squeeze in together and get a get a picture for for everyone here. So. All right, here we go. All right, so I'll go ahead and maybe we can, maybe we go like this. How about this? All right. So are you are you able to see the proclamation? Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you very much. And so let's take the second organization that was here. And so if you happen to overlap, feel free to stay. But I I believe it was a symphony orchestra from Cupertino. Is that correct? If there are members available from that organization? If you wish to, oh, Ben, here's the. And we'll put, yeah, we'll put these here. All right. All right, welcome. Everything good? Come on in, come on in. Oh, John, you should go in the order on the dais. So next to, next to Ben and, yeah. Okay, so this is to the Homestead Symphonic Wind Ensemble. And so they participated in the same event in Washington DC. And we express our appreciation as well for representing our city so wonderfully. And Director Scharf, did you want to speak to that organization as well?
Um, it it all still applies. They did a fantastic performance.
Okay, it all applies. Very succinct. Thank you very much. Much appreciated. Have a big round of applause for these students, too. All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Nice to meet you.
Yeah, nice to meet you, too.
Welcome. Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone. That was wonderful. It is so wonderful to see everyone back. Okay, so we are going to take a moment, perhaps a minute, perhaps 90 seconds, to allow everyone receiving the proclamation from our first item to go ahead and make their way to the entrance or the exit, as it were, of Community Hall before we provide the second proclamation tonight.
Actually, if someone could send us a clip of your performance, that would be great. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you all so much. Okay, wonderful. And, okay, as that resolves, it's a wonderful, wonderful group of students. It's very nice to see. So I believe that we have someone from our community named Leila. Is Leila, Leila, welcome. Yeah, come on up. So the second item on our ceremonial matters and presentations is a proclamation commemorating the Eid al-Fitr holiday, honoring the end of Ramadan for members of the Islamic faith and celebrating religious freedoms for every member of the Cupertino community. And so Leila, would you like to join us on the dais to accept the proclamation on behalf of the various organizations and members of the celebratory faith? Okay, welcome. Great, let's get up there. So the proclamation itself, do you have it? I think I need a microphone. So I learned a little bit about Eid recently in this proclamation, Leila. And I learned that actually the the formal declaration of it is actually not definitively set until the actual time. And so it was anticipated to be May 3. Is that correct? Or was it May 2 yesterday?
Yeah, I think it's based on the moon sign.
Okay, well, let me give you another microphone here. One second.
Yes, for for some communities, it's based on signs strictly because when the new moon comes, then you then you know that it's the end of the month. But also sometimes it's based on, people like to see the moon by for with their own eyes. So they go up into the hills and try to see the new moon. And then when they sight, when they see the moon, then they know it's Eid the next day.
Interesting.
Yes.
Well, well, thank you very much for being here to accept this on behalf of the Islamic faith organizations that we're providing these proclamations to.
Thank you.
And they really are a celebration of religious freedoms and respect for all members of all faith communities in in Cupertino and the surrounding areas. And so thank you so much for being here on this evening with us.
Yeah, I appreciate it very much, yes. It's a very special time because we fast for a month from sunrise to from dawn to dusk every day. And so it's a reminder to be thankful for everything. And we give charity and and remember not to waste and be thankful for everything we have, so.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
And it it does sound like there are such great strands of, you know, spiritual faith and practices throughout the entire international community. And we very much appreciate our members of the Islamic faith here in Cupertino.
Yeah, thank you.
So thanks for being with us here tonight.
We appreciate it.
Absolutely. So I'll just indicate the organizations receiving this. First, we have the West Valley Muslim Association right here in the West Valley. And second, and this was the organization that made the initial request, this is from the, this for the Muslim Community Association of Santa Clara. And so initially, that was the request from the member of the public, and we provided it. And she was very kind enough to reach out to you. And we realized that we actually have a, an organization in the West Valley as well that we should provide that to, too. So thanks very much for being here this evening.
You're welcome.
Here's the pro.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Leila.
Thank you.
And did you want to say anything else before we?
No, I mean, if you have any questions or, I mean, I don't know. It's, yeah, I mean, no, I just feel that sometimes people may misunderstand the Muslim community because of media and things like that. But just to know that we're, we're very peace-loving people, and we try to strive to be generous and kind to people. And and that's part of our faith. That's the main tenet of our faith, is to be kind and generous and and peaceful.
Well, thank you for sharing with us. And Vice Mayor Chow, you have a question.
So if any school teachers would like to reach out to you guys to get a presentation on Ramadan or other festivals, where do they reach out to?
Yeah, we would love to. There's an organization called ING. But they could also even reach out to me. I'm a, I'm a resident of Cupertino, and I actually work at the County of Santa Clara, too, at the Office of Supportive Housing. So I'd be, I'd be happy to. I provide data for the city of Cupertino because we're trying to resolve the homeless crisis in Cupertino. for the city of Cupertino because we're trying to resolve the homeless crisis in Cupertino.
Oh, well, we should talk more. Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah. So I thought I'd see some people here. But yeah, it's, so definitely you can, you can reach out to me. I can connect you with anybody. You can, yeah, for that, for sure.
How about the public, I think? I mean, I mean, the public who are watching.
Oh, while watching, like.
A website, where they, yeah. Is there a website they can reach out?
Islamic Network Group, ING, is a good website that provides information. And there's also CAIR, C-A-I-R, which provides a lot of information also. So.
That's the Council on American Islamic Relations. And during my years on council, I've grown to have a great respect for their executive director or government affairs representative, Samina Uzman, who's always very consistent about reaching out to the various councils in this area to make sure that people are included. Unfortunately, on April 23rd, I think our collective council had something like a dozen events to go to, but we were also invited over to one of the organizations to observe, you know, some of the goings-on of Ramadan after sunset.
Yes.
And so that led to this conversation. We would love to provide a proclamation to, you know, have that kind of inclusive congratulatory part of this celebration. So thank you so much for being here tonight again.
Yeah.
And I'm certain that the city of Cupertino will be working with you and many other people in the future to help provide more supportive housing, especially with the plight of the unhoused in our area.
Yes.
So thank you so much, Leila.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. And at this point, we are at postponements and orders of the day. We had a special meeting directly before this. Our council voted to continue that study session on capital improvement projects. And so what I'd like to do is first suggest that we place the continued study session item after consent calendar items. So that's my, my first point of discussion. But I do have an ask for our other council members. Are there any other requests for postponements or orders of the day at this time for our current agenda?
Mayor Paul?
Council member Moore.
Okay, thank you. I was interested in moving item 26 to be earlier in the agenda, ahead of item 25, perhaps.
Okay, let's take a look. Item 26 is the last, the next to last item on the agenda. That's considering accounts payable for the period ending December 30th. And your suggestion is to move it before the municipal code amendments to the Cupertino Municipal Code regarding the Economic Development Committee. I, I would be happy to encompass that into a motion.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. Or even ahead of item 23, if that would be possible.
Or even ahead of 23. I would say, well, well, I, I would actually prefer to be ahead of item 25, if that's okay. But.
That's fine.
We'll see what the, okay, great. So let me ask for a motion if there are no other requests. I don't see none. And Madam City Clerk or City Manager Troop, were there any requests from staff with regard to postponements or orders of the day this evening? Okay. And so I would like to ask that someone move that we continue the study session item from earlier this evening to directly after consent calendar, and that we move item 26 on this regular agenda to directly in front of item 25. May I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
And may I have a second? Council member Willie raises his hand. Can you make a vocal second, please?
Yes, I second.
Okay, very good. And seeing no hands raised for discussion, may we please vote with our lights?
The motion carries unanimously.
Very good. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. We are now on to reports by City Council and staff. But before we go to that, I believe we have oral communications. Oral communications is for any member of the public that would like to speak on an item that is not on our agenda this evening. And so I will go to members of our community on Zoom first. I see three hands raised. Those are from Lisa Warren, Peggy Griffin, and Connie Cunningham currently. And so everyone will have three minutes under oral communications. We will then go from the Zoom function for anyone who is either on Zoom or calling in to blue cards that are filled out live here. And those have three minutes, three minutes as well. The fourth way to communicate with regard to an item, or in this case, oral communications, is to email our city clerk during the time that the first speaker on Zoom, in this case, is done, is speaking. And so if that email is sent during that period of time, then your comment, up to three minutes, will be read into the record. So right now, Lisa Warren, you are our first speaker. And I remind everybody that if your hand is raised, or if you have a blue card filled in, or you email within the time that Lisa is done, is speaking, then you'll be called on for oral communications. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. I agree. It was awesome to have all those students, any people in that room with you guys tonight. Okay, I have a request that it be considered, if it's not already being considered, that what is now referred to as Lawrence Midi Park does not remain named that. I think it deserves something far better than a street corner that's not even really a corner, that is not even in the city of Cupertino. So if we could have staff talk about that and then reach out to the public to see if there are suggestions for a name that would be far more appropriate. So that's number one. I, along with a number of other people, have previously requested that the city conduct a housing audit. Where do we currently have housing, what type? What's the density? What's the actual occupancy of those units, et cetera? And it may be too late to do that for this housing element cycle, but we need to do it regardless. We should have done it long ago. So I'm requesting that again. So please can discuss it and do it. And I previously asked for a similar thing with bike lanes and bike, other bike treatments to see what's really being used before the city spends a lot of money and time to create new bike maneuvering. And I recently read as part of a staff report that there has been no public input related to a BlackBerry Farm splash pad. I also recently heard a suggestion from Vice Mayor Chow that Memorial Park will be a good place to create some version of a splash pad. I think that is a great idea if there is positive public input for that suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Our next speaker is Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Council and staff. I sent slides to Kirsten, but I, thank you, she's fast. I want to talk about, I had hoped that the council, the staff would present an objective. What is VAALCO and what are the changes? But it obviously is not coming. So I've spent some time analyzing stuff. And as I learn more, I'm going to present. And what you see right now is a comparison. There are, the, the total square footage counts what I call airspace, and it's space above 15 feet. So if a room is 20 feet high, it has a 20-foot ceiling, the space between 15 and 20 gets counted extra. So in the original 2018 plan, SB 35, you can't, you see the first line of numbers. And the total, if you compare, is, I'm using with airspace. And the total for 2018 is 7.4 versus 7.5, which doesn't sound like a lot of change. But when you look at, you remove the airspace, what happened in the rise was that they converted the airspace to actual usable space. That means that the ceilings dropped and the spaces actually got usable. So when you look again, and you look at the far right number, 6.9 was 2018 usable space. But when you look at the rise, it's 7.4 million square feet of usable space. And what that means is if you look at the bottom notes, the residential unit area increased 664,000 usable, a square feet usable space. That's great. But it means more people. The total floor area increased by five, half a million square feet. That means usable space. That means more people. There was a loss of residential amenities, and I haven't figured out what that means. A friend checked, and all the units have laundry, which is good. So that's okay. Increase of office space of 150,000 square feet of space. That means more employees than were planned before. Increase of retail of 8,000, 8.8 square feet. I think that's like the size of a restaurant, but I haven't figured that out yet. So anyway, the total increase is half a million square feet of usable space. Next slide, please. Okay, this is the format. Whoa, go back. I'm not sure. Is that the second page?
Thank you, Peggy. That's your three minutes.
All right.
And we'll go on to Connie Cunningham. Welcome, Connie.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager, and any public who are here tonight. On 2022, April 26, I attended the Planning Commission meeting on the housing element. The housing element is due January 2023 and is, excuse me, the plan for adding 4,588 housing units to the Cupertino's housing stock. I am particularly concerned with the possibility of displacement of people from their existing homes. The current inventory presented that night cited several possible building sites that would result in mass displacement of existing renters, in some cases without even adding more density. One calculation shows 600-plus families displaced under this plan. Then there was talk of culling sites from those on that list. Given the possibilities for displacement, it is appropriate to keep the numbers of sites large. Very concerned about displacement, I urge that we look at the sites that will not displace people. I have specific questions addressing the issue of culling the sites. I ask that the report be revised to please tell us what the reasons were for including sites on the list or the map, and to please tell us what the reasons were for leaving properties off the list or the map. Land use policies may be a reason that owners haven't made offers of interest to date. There are two lists, recommended and not recommended sites. And I have an excellent example of 20784 Stevens Creek Boulevard, a former Pizza Hut, it's been empty for several years, is not on either the list for recommendation or not recommendation. Why not? That would be excellent spot. 200840 Stevens Creek Boulevard, former Fontana's Restaurant, which has been empty for years. It's on the list of not recommended. And why not, I ask again? The heart of the city is the better place to put homes that has access to shopping and education at sites around the city, and transit, and the education right there near Deans College as well. So I want to make that plea to the City Council when they're hearing the report from the Planning Commission, that they consider very carefully the idea that they could be adding sites that would displace current families who live in Cupertino. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. That is our list of speakers on Zoom. Madam City Clerk, are there any blue cards for oral communications this evening? So our blue cards are from Jennifer Griffin and Rick Kitson. Welcome, Jennifer Griffin.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Jennifer Griffin. And kind of, anyway, we'll plunge into this. There's a brand-new housing bill called AB 1120 by Assembly Member Buffy Wicks from Oakland. And I'm very, very concerned about it. It was a gutted amend from, I believe, April 26, 27 from last week. And the, that means they had a previous bill that I think it had something to do with housing, but it was not like this. They basically take it apart. Senator Weiner is kind of started all this essentially. And they take it apart and they pack it with all sorts of new and exciting things. The problem with this bill is that it is going to allow housing on any commercial site, tech park, office building, by right ministerially with no SEQA, no environmental impact report, and added density bonuses. This is as bad as it gets. I, you have, you cannot do building of massive amounts of housing on the existing tech parks in the county. We do not know what is in that soil. You have 60 years of things that have been dumped, touch, touch a chloride, carbon tet, dumped in basements, either knowingly or unknowingly. You have groundwater contamination. Ford Ord right now has groundwater contamination problems. They're thinking about putting housing in there. And you, you can't proceed this way. I, I'm frankly, I'm getting very, oh, plus you can't have any parking. This is as bad as it gets, but yet this bill has been rushed through two assembly committees already in one week. And we're really putting the cart before the horse here. You can't do that. Now, I will make a statement. I don't think Mrs. Wicks has any tech experience at all, nothing. She has a very good background. But I am surprised at any group that would back or support this bill, having this be thrown onto the public in, in California. If this becomes law in January of 2023, we will have mayhem. There will be lawsuits coming out. My brother worked at a company in Mountain View right now in the 1970s and 80s that is a super fun site. You, this is, to even come up with a bill like this is absolutely highly, it is notorious, it is reprehensible, and people need to start asking questions. I'm also concerned that we have, how does this affect VAALCO? I won't pick on VAALCO particularly. How does it affect a lot of tech that is owned by other areas?
Thank you, Jennifer. That's your three minutes.
And is this going to be thrown into the housing element in January?
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And our last live speaker is Rick Kitson. Welcome, Rick. And video, if you could. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Rick Kitson. I am not here for work, but I'm here as a former city employee of 15 years. I am the interim executive director of the Chamber of Commerce until June 30. However, I'm here to talk about the advantages of being on both sides of the fence. You get to see a little bit more of what goes on. So when I was just starting in the city of Cupertino in 2001, the executive director, Jody Hanson, came to the city manager's office with a very old 1994, I believe, agreement with the chamber, complaining that it was seriously out of date and needed to be updated. Nothing was done. Since then, of course, we've had the city Golden Jubilee.
One moment, Rick. If, if video, can you pause?
This isn't coming out of my time, I hope.
No, no, I'm just asking video to pause your time. So we do have an item that is related to chamber. And so I just wanted to check in.
This has nothing to do with accounts payable or, or any of the attached documentation to that. This is really more about my experience as a city employee and as a chamber employee about patterns of what has happened in the past. Nothing to do with the accounts payable.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll take your, your word on that. And so let's go ahead and hear the remainder of your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your, thank you for your time. And so we had the Golden Jubilee in 2005. There had just been a dot-com bust. So it was my job to put together a Golden Jubilee without any gold. We had no money. We worked with a couple of local organizations. Neither We worked with a couple of local organizations, neither one of which the city had an agreement with. I think the event turned out really well, not just because it was my job to do it, but this is one of the patterns that has happened historically for smaller contract, smaller participating organizations in the city. We see it again with the, there was I Love Cupertino. The city asked for, we, this is not about accounts payable. Excuse me, if I could finish.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to stop this again. Video, if you could pause the time again. I'm going to go ahead and hear Councilmember Moore's point of order. Councilmember Moore?
Point of order because I Love Cupertino is an agenda attachment to item twenty-six.
Let's check in with our city attorney, Chris Jensen. What's your opinion on this legally, Chris?
So I think that this is a general discussion of the Chamber of Commerce that is not specifically pertinent to accounts payable, so I would recommend, recommend letting the comments continue.
Letting the speaker continue, okay.
Yes.
Well, thank you very much, Rick, again, and we'll go ahead and have you start up.
Thank you for your careful deliberation.
Absolutely.
A service, an I love service was requested and a proposal was submitted. What came back was not an agreement, but what came back was an email saying, send us the bill. What I'm saying from my experience on both sides of the fence that there is a pattern, and I hope that the City Council, city staff, and anyone doing business with the city would expect a written agreement of expectations. I think that's something that taxpayers deserve. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Rick, and let's return to our dais and the city clerk. Madam City Clerk, were there any emails to the city clerk address during the time allocated for doing so?
No, Mayor.
Okay, no email communications under oral communications. Let's go ahead and return to our agenda. The next items on our agenda are under the category of reports by council and staff. Item number three is a series of brief reports on council member activities and brief announcements. I remember, I remind my colleagues that we have a complete total of allocated five minutes divided between us for this item. Would anyone like to go first? This, you know, for a handy rule of thumb, activities that are not related to committee assignments ever since, I guess this would be April twentieth, I think, which was the day after our prior city council meeting. And so I do see, I don't know who's talking here, but Councilmember Way or Councilmember Moore, did you, either one of you want to go first on this? Councilmember Way.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I'll take one minute. The Earth and Arbor Day, I think all of us were there, but I want to especially talk about Councilmember Moore, and I went to the tree planting. It was really good, especially we have the Google Kids on bikes, and they were shuffling dots into the roots, and they were very curious. It was really good experience. Second item is I went to Cal City's Peninsula Division, and we met at Viola Garden, so I want you to remind everybody, our Cal City PAC fundraiser yearly is coming up. Mark your calendar for September twenty-first. It's going to be at Viola Garden again where it's on the planning. And the other last thing, we all went to a lot of things together. I'm looking at everybody's head. One more thing is about our library expansion ribbon cutting. I really appreciate, you know, Assistant Manager Diane and then Capital Improvement Manager Susan Mycos for, thank our staff. It's, I want to say these are constructions of the heart. It's not just about their work, it's about their design, and they put their heart into it. That's why we have such a beautiful expansion. So thanks for our city staff and the design and construction team.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Way. And Councilmember Moore is next.
Sure, thank you. So I did attend Earth Day, and it is on a great new location on the lawn, and so I'm really glad to have this event back. Last Friday, I participated in the Cal City statewide environmental quality policy committee, and I moved that we adopt a support position for ballot initiative nineteen dash zero-zero twenty-eight, the California Plastic Waste Reduction Regulations Initiative, which Recology supports. The motion passed, and this item has already made it to the November ballot. We also supported a biomass reduction bill to convert biomass to energy rather than leaving it on the ground to become fuel for a fire. We all attended the library expansion opening event on Friday evening. Saturday morning, I went to the Lawrence Midi Tour, which was conducted by staff and MIG with stations around the future park space. It was pretty well-attended, and myself, Councilmember John Willie, and Mayor Paul were also there in attendance. After that, I went to the Cherry Blossom Festival and toured all the exhibits. It looked very popular and very well-run by the Toya Kawa Sister City. Great job, and thank you to all the volunteers and our sheriffs who made for an enjoyable and safe event. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. And Councilmember Willie, would you go next?
I'm not quite sure. Councilman Way, it was you and me at the tree planting. Yeah, so, yeah, I'm not that attractive, sorry. At any rate, the one I, you know, these events that we had these last couple day, couple weeks, fantastic. The one I'll shout out for is it was the five-year anniversary for Silicon Valley Clean Energy since its inception and in April of two thousand seventeen. A lot of that credit goes for previous council and Mayor Rod Sinks, who was part of that formation committee, and it truly has been providing clean energy to our community and saving them millions of dollars that the rates are below PG&E's rates. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Willie, and Vice Mayor Chow.
On the twenty-second, I met with a group of students from Lindbrook High, Future Business Leaders of America. They have a project working with business, the bike shop, to help with their social media outreach to the young people. Twenty-third, attended the Earth Day, and at night I attended the Armenian community event to celebrate, to commemorate, to remember the one hundred and seven years of genocide that's not recognized by the Turkish government. And it was delightful to find out we have a cute Armenian church on Stelling Road, and I encourage everyone to visit, and we have a strong Armenian community in Cupertino. And twenty-ninth, it's such a wonderful event at the library expansion. The staff and mayor really did a great job of planning that, and awesome food from pineapple pie. And thirtieth, Cherry Blossom, for the first time co-existed with the farmers market. Both organizations worked together to make that possible, and we, I'm happy to see that. On the thirtieth, I also attended a thirtieth anniversary of the Citizens for Better Community, which is an organization in Fremont, started mainly for Chinese civic engagement, but right now they have a board, a diverse board of multiple races and ethnicities. On the first, I also attended API Coalition Summit. It was a great event. On the thirtieth also, I am on the Cal City's Housing Community and Economic Development Policy Committee. We voted on two bills, but mainly this year, the Cal Cities is looking at how to redefine local control. So the recommendation from the committee is to raise the bar for the legislators to prove the need for statewide housing crisis so that they have to basically regulate municipal affairs and further define what is municipal affairs and consider, consta, possible constitution amendment as a tool to protect local democracy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Chow, and I won't repeat any of the items that were repeated, other than to, I do want to give some special kudos to members of the staff that really helped with the plans for the library expansion ribbon cutting. I want to thank the video staff. They really just did a tremendous job. It's a brand-new space, a lot of things to work out, as you'd imagine, with regard to the video and the audio. I want to thank Esther Kwan, our Acting Communications Director, or Communications Coordinator, I should say, did a ton of work as well, making sure that it was a successful event, and thanks for our deputy city manager, Katie Nomura, who also took laboring on a number of items. So my report, the remainder of that will comprise April twentieth, Vice Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Chow and I attended the Cupertino Historical Society Board Meeting. That was a good meeting. On the twenty-first, we finished the April nineteenth Cupertino City Council meeting, and we had really good discussions on the work plan. So I thought that was an excellent, you know, continuation. On the twenty-sixth, prior to our Bike Ped Commission meeting, we went over to the Fremont Union High School District right before the Bike Ped Commission interview started and recognized members of the Cupertino High School, including a student who saved the life of a faculty member with quick thinking and CPR. And so that was a great recognition to provide. And then finally, I did want to mention that we really had incredible candidates at our, at our Bike Ped Commission interviews, and so, you know, whatever we're doing as a, as a community, really glad to see it, you know, collectively converge into, you know, moments like that. And, you know, and at times like that, you just kind of lament the fact that there are a limited number of spots available, but of course, there are so many projects out there and many ways to get involved. So we thank you for that. Our next item on the council agenda is the committee assignments. These are our formal committee assignments that are assigned in December of each year. So that is item four. A little bit more time on these because there are formal representations throughout Cupertino and the Valley. Would anyone like to go first on this? We each have a couple of minutes to provide updates on our committees. Councilmember Way.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I attended the Silicon Valley Regional Interoperative Authority, meaning SVRIA, orientation. You know, being a city council member is really a learning experience. This is amazing organization that's in the background, is made of fourteen cities, the County of Santa Clara, a couple of special districts like Valley Water and VTA. What does it do? It operates an emergency operating communication system that when there is an emergency, that we can communicate and save lives. So I'm going to take one minute to report. They have twenty-five point five, twenty-three point five million transmissions in two thousand twenty-one, so approximately sixty-five thousand per day, and that's how this communication is operating in our background, save lives well, and then it really is a great learning experience for me. So it makes me realize, and everyone should realize that, there are a lot of people in the background doing things to keep our community safe, to work together. So I want to say, this is a mouthful. I'm going to say it again, Silicon Valley Regional Interoperative, Interoperability Authority. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much, Councilmember Way. Would anyone like to go next on updates to our committee assignments? Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, I didn't have assignments, but I'll just, you know, a shout-out for what Councilman Way just said. The, one of the first events that this was really used on was the shooting at the VTA yard that happened, and this, this communication network allowed the different police departments, the different fire departments to all be on the same band, talking who's where, who's doing what. So it really does save lives and keep people from getting in harm's way, knowing what's going on where. So thanks.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. I'll go ahead and go next. I don't see hands raised down the dais here. Now we do have a couple of hands. Well, let me go, I'll go next. I think extending upon a theme, the SVRIA was, was an appointment that I actually had for a couple of years prior to Councilmember Willie and then Councilmember Way, and I will say that, you know, when you look at the regional part of the SVRIA, they are, it really is regional. I mean, you have a number of representatives from all over the county, including law enforcement, and while I was there, we were considering a protocol for allowing access outside of this region. So, for example, the federal government might want to have some access to, you know, this communication system, but we were very assiduous about making sure that we have a vetting process, for instance. And so when you have that kind of stable set of antennas and a communication system, it really just behooves your, your community to develop something like that if you can. And, you know, fortunately, during my time on that board, we were able to build out the entire system and complete it. So just very briefly, I'm on the VTA Board representing the five West Valley Cities. We had a board meeting and a workshop on the twenty-sixth, second of April. You know, a lot of, you know, critical issues like labor negotiations and other functionalities were discussed there. Things, I think overall at the, at the VTA is going as well can be, as can be expected, given the fact that we're coming off of the pandemic, and, you know, a number of other items have been challenging us in the past couple of years. On April twenty-fifth, I was on the Audit Committee meeting, Councilmember Moore, and I sit on the Audit Committee, and so perhaps we'll get more details from Councilmember Moore. But I will say that I think that with regard to the Audit Committee, we are doing quite a bit of work in making sure that our auditing function and our requirements under both municipal code and the state law are met, and I think this is all in service to making sure that the dollar is spent wisely in Cupertino. And so I'll put in a plug for the fact that, you know, over the course of time, and again from two thousand, two thousand fourteen, there was a fourteen-year issue that predated any of us, and we, you know, insisted, we demanded that we have an external auditor come in, and that came in, and we're in the midst of that process. And, you know, when I made an earlier comment about a procurement officer, for instance, that all comes out of, you know, the fact that we were really diligent in making sure that we did the right follow-ups back in two thousand eighteen when that was disclosed. So April twenty-seventh, there was a West Valley Mayors and Managers meeting, so City Manager Jim Troop and I sit in on that on a monthly basis, and I believe, Jim, it was Supervisor Joe Semidian, correct, who was our guest speaker that day?
Yes, that was correct.
Yeah, so Supervisor Semidian, who represents us in the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors, came and spoke to us about, you know, various issues. I asked about housing and housing element, for instance, but there are a lot of good things that were covered there. And so, yeah, those are my updates for the committee assignments. Vice Mayor Chow or Councilmember Moore, would you like to provide your updates since April nineteenth? Vice Mayor Chow.
So on the twenty-first, we had a library JPA meeting, and we approved the budget and got an update of the strategic plan, which they do every, I think, five years. They are, they have, they outreach to different communities and have focus group meetings, and they are still in the process of outreach. So if you have any good ideas about how library should develop, you should watch out for that. And on the twenty-fifth, we had the third community engagement meeting for the housing elements subcommittee. It's a third meeting. We received another report with information that I had requested a month ago, and it's, but let me first, so the next meeting will be May sixteenth at eleven o'clock. That's another subcommittee meeting, and on the twenty-third of May, we will have a housing element community meeting that will be virtual, or is it hybrid? I think it's hybrid, yeah. And I have to report that I feel this subcommittee has not been very effective. We provide input, but it doesn't seem our input is taken into consideration. We receive a report, and I don't think we are, we, I think we form this committee to want to help with outreach to the vulnerable community and widen the community outreach, but it's been two months since we formed it, and I don't think we are, it seems we are not appreciated by the consultants and the staff to, to really help them improve the process, and they are still working, using the West Valley Community Service as the outreach vehicle when they alone really does not provide the kind of service we need, which is fair housing assessment and evaluation. So I think, I hope the council can reevaluate the goal of this subcommittee. And upcoming, we have CUSD and City Cupertino Strategic Partnership Meeting, which is usually quarterly on May ninth at two thirty P M., if anyone is interested to attend. We have two council members and two school board members to discuss interest, that mutual interest of the two organizations.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Chow, and next we have Councilmember Moore.
I really appreciate your update on the CEP Strategic Advisory Committee, Vice Mayor. I think it was very helpful. So I also serve on it. We met on April twenty-fifth. It's a committee of myself, Vice Chair Chow, Planning Commission Chair Sharf, and Housing Commission Chair Tessa Parrish. I have to say the process has been very slow. I have to say, the process has been very slow. We had asked for two public outreach meetings to have been held by EMC prior to that meeting on the twenty-fifth and they did not provide them. We did discuss the upcoming May twenty-third Housing Element Meeting Forum. And additionally, a number of hours have been billed and we are not sure if the meetings that they held with West Valley Community Services are truly applicable to the housing element needs and we are still investigating that. The Audit Committee met on April twenty-fifth. We did receive the OPEB and Section 115 Trust Quarterly Report. It showed a significant downturn in all sectors except for commodities, which the investment firm did not invest in. The Chandler Cupertino account has a total of approximately one hundred and fifty million dollars. It is conservatively invested according to law and therefore had a decrease in account value as inflation has risen. After many months, we have received a monthly treasurer's report, which the council subcommittee that I'm serving on with Mayor Paul had requested. We meet with staff to work on the format of, and we'll be back at the next city council meeting with recommendations. And lastly, I believe we need a space for the various subcommittees to report, such as the City Grant Program Subcommittee and the Budget Format Subcommittee. If it is supposed to be within this section of the meeting agenda, please let me know if we need to have a new portion moving forward, let me know that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. And we're so advised, we do have a number of subcommittees that we should revisit and allow to provide a formal report as to their activities. And so, so noted. Mr. City Manager, our next item is yours, that is the City Manager Update. And so, welcome back, Jim.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, some, some good things that we have going on. So we have the, make sure I can read it right this time, the South Bay Fun Fest. The Cupertino Youth Activity Board in collaboration with Campbell and Saratoga Youth Commissions will host the inaugural Youth and Teen South Bay Fun Fest on Sunday, May fifteenth, from two PM to five PM at the Cupertino Civic Center. Seventh to twelfth grade students are invited to de-stress and recharge with hands-on activities, resource booths, mobile recreation games, and raffle prizes. To register, please visit the event's calendar on the city's website, so that'll be a fun one for everyone to go to. We also have the Fine Arts Name Change Survey. So the current, the city is currently considering the name change for the Fine Arts Commission. We are collecting community input now through Friday, May thirteenth. Share which name you prefer at the EngageCupertino.org website. Moving on, we have, as part of the Lehigh Stevens Creek Quarry's Council Work Program, we now have three noise and air quality sensors that have been installed and they are activated. An additional noise and air quality sensors have been placed by Montavista High School. Later this month, the website will be available to the public that displays real-time data from these sensors, so that's really cool. The city is currently in the community input phase for multiple capital input, multiple capital improvement projects and is seeking community participation. Upcoming opportunities include on Saturday, May seventh, from eleven AM to one PM, the city will have a community comment pop-up opportunity at Creekside Park for the Lawrence Midi Master Plan Project. On Wednesday, May eighteenth, the Blackberry Farm Golf Course Renovation Alternative Use Study Reports will be presented to the Parks and Recreation Commission, seeking feedback on the most effective community engagement. The Lawrence Midi Master Plan Online Survey is open until Monday, May twenty-third. To take that survey, visit EngageCupertino.org/LawrenceMidi. The city recently closed the Jolly Men All-Inclusive Play Area Online Survey, so the survey closed, not the park. More than three hundred community members participated. To provide input and learn more about the city's capital improvement projects, please visit our EngageCupertino.org. And thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you very much, Jim. And so we are on to Consent Calendar. Our Consent Calendar this evening is items six through twenty-two. Let's go to our city clerk to find out if there are any members of the public that have requested pulling items from our Consent Calendar. Madam City Clerk?
Yes.
Are there any requests?
Yes, Mayor, we have a request from Peggy Griffin to pull items eight, nine, and ten. And also, Mayor, I did submit a desk item for a correction to item seven, the minutes.
Okay, so, so informed, we have a desk item for item seven, correction to those minutes, and a request from the public to pull items eight, nine, and ten. Would anyone else on council like to pull any items from Consent Calendar, Councilmember Moore?
Well, perhaps you could provide some advice on this one. I'm considering pulling twelve through twenty-one until we've met for the subcommittee regarding the accounts payable with regards to the treasurer's report, because I think we might want to just pull it, come back to council with a format suggestion and then have it return all in one document rather than having the group, which is one of the things that I'm interested in doing, is having a single treasurer's report update that has the, the accounts payable as attachments.
Okay, I, I'll entertain a motion to table items twelve through twenty-one and continue them until our subsequent council meeting.
Okay, and one more, I was hoping you could provide a little information about item twenty-two.
I'd be happy to pull item twenty-two.
Okay.
So let me ask for an omnibus motion. I'd like to see if there is a motion to accept Consent Calendar items six and seven and eleven. And so will someone make that motion, six, seven, eleven, those, and number seven as informed by the desk item, editing the minutes?
So moved.
Councilmember Willie moves items six, seven, and eleven. Is there a second? Councilmember Moore, seconds? Okay, good. All right, I don't see further, do you want a discussion on six, seven, eleven? Uh, yes, Councilmember Way.
So the, the treasurer's report, isn't that we're working at a monthly treasurer's report, but these are weekly account payables? I would think if we have that, maybe we can approve these first. I'm, I'm just really tired of looking at.
Well, let's go to, because we haven't identified them, that doesn't mean we won't address them. So we'll, we'll address them subsequent to this. And so we have consent items six, seven, and eleven. On the motion, please vote with your lights.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, very good. And so I have requests to pull items eight, nine, and ten. And let me go ahead and ask for a motion, and we can discuss your comment at this point after the motion, Councilmember Way. So the motion will be to pull items eight, nine, and ten, as well as twenty-two, from the Consent Calendar for discussion and consideration, and to table items twelve through twenty-one for continuation to our subsequent council meeting, which will be on May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. May I have a motion to that effect? Councilmember Moore?
So moved.
Is there a second for this? Councilmember Willie?
Second.
Okay. And so Councilmember Way, you wanted to discuss the items that were tabled and moved for continuation. Uh, yes, Chris?
Sorry, I have a point of order.
Yes, please.
So a motion, motion to table is not debatable under Rosenberg's Rules of Order.
Okay, motion to table, and what about a motion to continue if I modified the motion?
Um, I believe that that's the same, same word for the same, different word for the same thing.
Motion to table as well as to continue, okay. So because I made a commitment to go ahead and discuss with Councilmember Way, Councilmember Way, you are, you are shaking your head. Well, I do want to honor that commitment and so I would be willing to pull that off of the, off of the table right now, if you wanted to discuss your points on it. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and request that the motion be withdrawn. So the move-in is Councilmember Moore and the second is Councilmember Willie. Are you willing, I see a head shake from Councilmember Moore. And Councilmember Willie, are you, let's have some verbalization. Councilmember Moore, are you willing to pull the motion?
No.
And Councilmember Willie, would you be willing to pull your second?
Yes.
I'll pull my second.
You pull your second?
Yes.
Okay, so now we no longer have a second for the motion. Okay, so is that, is that your intent, Councilmember Willie, to no longer have a second for?
But you were pulling the motion back.
I'm asking whether you would be willing to take your second back so that we can discuss. Okay, okay, so we don't have a second right now for the motion, so let's go ahead and address Councilmember Way's concerns. So Councilmember Way, you had a concern regarding all accounts payable. Those are items twelve through twenty-one.
I don't see the point of not approving these because we, these has been made already. So I think moving forward, yes, with the new treasurer's report, with the new format, but for these, I do believe that it's, it doesn't make a difference what we pulled it or not. I prefer not to pull it and just approve it because we've been doing that. And then with the new discipline and the new rules, maybe we can follow that with, after that, so.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Councilmember Way, for expressing your sentiment there. I will express mine as well on this. I asked staff last time whether there are any deleterious effects for tabling and continuing and they did indicate to me that there are not, since this is essentially a formality, the accounts payable have been paid. So let me check in with our staff again. Does that continue to be the case? There are, in fact, no deleterious financial or legal effects to continue this to our May seventeenth, or the set of items, I should say, to our May seventeenth meeting.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not aware of any legal effect of a delay.
Okay, thank you very much, Attorney Jensen. And I did see that our city manager Troop was also nodding his head.
And I concur with our city attorney.
Okay, very good. We do still have that motion on the table. Councilmember Moore, are you still moving that, that motion? And again, to remind everyone, that's to pull items eight, nine, and ten for items number twelve, let me make sure I'm saying this correctly, eight, nine, and ten for items twelve through twenty-one to table and continue to May seventeenth and for item twenty-two to pull that as well. Was that motion still on the table, Councilmember Moore?
Correct. And do I need to make a comment on these accounts payable items and the treasurer's responsibilities under the law? So that.
I believe that would be best if you wanted to make a comment now, since, once the motion is on the table, as our city attorney pointed out, that we wouldn't be able to further discuss.
Okay, so I, so the question you had for me is?
My question is, do you have any input with regard to those items that were discussed by Councilmember Way and myself? Those are items twelve through twenty, twenty-one.
Okay, well.
Or eleven through, no, twelve through twenty-one.
So this is the time for that input?
Yes, that would be.
Okay, thank you. So the, under the law, the city has been obligated to provide monthly treasurer's reports since, since they incorporated in nineteen fifty-five. It has only been in recent times that this, that I brought this issue up. And we need to discuss what the format of these reports is going to look like in order to both streamline our time here, but still provide the information for members of the public if they are wanting to look at the actual accounts payable statements. And further, I really do believe that we should be directing the Audit Committee to be looking at these accounts payable also, because every time we get a, you know, second set of eyes on them, we are doing the city a much better service.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. I don't see any further hands raised for commentary on this motion and so I'll ask for a second at this point. Councilmember Willie, would you like to?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, thank you very much. We have the motion and the second on the table. Madam City Clerk, would you allow us to vote with our lights?
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And so we will be going ahead after a five-minute break and considering items eight, nine, ten, and twenty-two in that order. And so we'll see you in five minutes. We have seven fifty-nine right now, we'll reconvene at eight oh five. Thank you.